Right on tables.
In the storage.
Oh, we still have them. I think they're right up there.
Over to the trash receipt.
All right, we're, we're, we're off and recording, guys.
Call the order. Nine. I will choose three twelve. It's going to be a little punchy, so.
Well, you get a good night's sleep tonight.
Catch up now before this weekend comes.
Or Thursday.
What's Thursday?
Well, that's what I was ca- I was including as the weekend.
Yes, you did.
I'll be, I'll be back weekend.
Actually, I shouldn't be doing this right now. This is part of our selectmen's meeting. Right, call the order. Um, discussion road bond, discussion. Who wants to lead off?
I can start if you want.
Yeah, please.
I asked Kevin to contact the bond counsel, Steve Whitley, our bond counsel, to find out if we pulled one of the bonds, if that would, what that would look like, what the, what the um logistics are of that. Um, something that I personally was thinking about doing. Already given me um for as hard as I've been working on all of this, and I appreciate the accolades for doing that, but I feel it's part of my job, but for all the hours I was putting in, there was a other people out there that were working equally as hard at dismantling the whole idea of it. And spinning what I would consider misguided information and misguided math. And um I don't want to continue to uh to work against that. Um, and um after the budget meeting the other night, where not a single budget member supported the idea of the bond, except for the representative to the board from the board of selectmen. Um, my opinion is uh we pulled the idea and um for just that, at what I started saying, I was kind of thinking about doing that before. Um, but I was afraid it would hurt the fire department, the public safety bond, which seems like it has overwhelming support. Um, it certainly has my support. It's certainly a need. Not that the road bond idea isn't a need. Um, but uh if we've got all these experts out there that think that I don't know how to do two plus two, and uh so we'll, we'll prove them right. That uh we can get this done in six years for under eight million dollars. And uh I think you'd be surprised that that's not gonna happen. So um there's a, you know, we get, we get challenged and tasked as we did at that budget meeting that the other night with uh why we don't use the experts in town that, well, we're experts in these fields, and I'm not saying that they're not by any stretch of the imagination. Um, I have reached out to all of these, a lot of these people and have had discussions before. Um, I would like to offer one challenge, and that is um the state of New Hampshire has a multi-billion dollar budget for their roads. It's New Hampshire. It's a granite state. We put a lot of ice melting material on our roadways. And what that does to a road in a very short span is amazing as far as the way it heaves. When you have different materials and different sections of road, how they accept the frost differently. And you get the humps and bumps. Um, I'll use uh Route sixteen, which was just resurfaced a couple of years ago to the tune of several hundred thousands of dollars, possibly the millions, to do the Route sixteen stretch from uh Milton to Ospey. And if you go south of the Ospey Howell, south of one seventy-one Old Granite Road on sixteen before the railroad tracks at the Ospey Ag, um, you could not have a cup of coffee in your hand um and try to drink that going down Route sixteen because of the heaves in that road right now. If anybody thinks that I'm making that up or if I'm exaggerating.
Oh, no, I tried to drink a cup of tea coming back from, from Dover today, all the way up. You couldn't do it.
And that is a multimillion dollar road with road engineers for the state of New Hampshire that I have had conversations with about this bond idea. And Leo hit the nail right on the head the other night. Townhouse Road is fifteen years old. That held, has hold, held up extremely well. Um, Evans Brothers did the dirt work for that road fifteen years ago, and they did a great job. And they're our contractor that we continue to use. Um, I'm not saying everybody's perfect and every job was perfect, and I'm certainly not perfect, but um for the, for the money that we have, the level of expectation, everybody thinks that we should, you know, have a China thing because we spent, spent a couple hundred thousand dollars on it. Um, and if you don't have fine china, a couple hundred thousand dollars, we're wasting taxpayers' money. We're still gonna get the same service, and it's gonna cost us a hell of a lot more money. But I'm just, I'm personally done fighting. Um, having said that, there is the unknowns. Um, Chuck, you addressed it yourself in an email to us about the historic Town Hall project and the, and the terrace, although there is a thirty day um.
Yeah, so I assumed I wrote that.
Yeah, there is a thirty day stay for two of the countries. Um, you know, while they sort things out, and that's, it's all politics and stuff like that. But I mean, just, just in the state of New Hampshire, um, you know, we've been starting to get notified by our um home heating oil companies of a ten cent, ten to twenty-five cent per gallon increase um because all of our petroleum products come out of Canada. And what has petroleum in it?
And Webb and a couple of the construction company suppliers called a lot of the major contractors in the last week and said price increases are happening. They're already mov- they're already proactively moving the prices up.
So I mean, given that, given the unknowns.
Are they gonna move it down if the terrace don't go through?
Don't know.
It'll stay the way it is, but. But we'll see. There's the unknowns and, and asphalt hot top is a petroleum product. So uh the unknowns of that. Um, we uh tentatively have a, a price locked in now for the first mile of one point one miles of pine on the road. So um, you know, I would recommend, because in order for it to happen before in order for us to go forward with the bond, as we all know in research, because the budget committee didn't support it, we would have to have the vote of the board in a public meeting. Um, not a work session, but a public meeting. To uh ina- inan- not unanimously, but majority um to support the project and rewrite language of the warrant article stating that we're kind of like overriding that because of the ten percent rule, ten percent rule. Um, for those people listening, those people that aren't familiar with it is that it, you can't, you're not supposed to go above ten percent. Um, the selectmen can't recommend a budget ten percent higher than what the budget committee is willing to uh support and move forward to the voters, so. Just obviously we do that, so um we would have to take steps to do that, and my vote for that would be no. Um, at this time, so.
Well, I just want to say I appreciate everything you've done. You did a lot of work. You know, I was always with you on this project. From a business standpoint and my career and stuff. Doing the analysis, it was the way to go. Ten years from now, you're gonna be, you're gonna be paying for your mile road. And we'll lose, but.
Well, like I said, it's majority vote, so you guys can still move it forward, but my.
You wanna make a motion? Or you got something to say?
Uh, no, that's.
Yes, we don't.
Yeah, that's what I'm meaning.
Okay.
So you don't want to let, let the townspeople do it? You just want to kill it right here?
Well, and that.
Just because the budget committee said no, doesn't mean the rest of the town's gonna say no.
I'm a very busy guy. I'm gonna lay it right out there.
Okay.
Okay, I'm a very busy guy. I am not going to, I would, I would propose having people in place that can oversee like the way it slips on the asphalt. I think we talked about that the other day. We have a road agent. Um, yes, our road agent works part-time for the contractor. Um, that has, and I, I don't, I don't, it's a small town, it's a small area. Um, I think that the numbers have proven themselves that that move to hire Kevin as our road agent was financially responsible and has paid dividends for us. Um, without question.
And I agree with that.
So I, I have no issue with, with that, with our decision of doing that. Don't think it was a conflict. Um, Kevin was already doing the work. Um, albeit for a contractor, he was already doing the work. The familiarity of, of everything um is, was already there, so. Um, it was, it was simple. It was a no-brainer. Um, so you know, we could put somebody in place like, you know, somebody like Bob who has a lot of experience. Um, I have had many conversations with Gary Dean, that's a gentleman he referenced with uh that worked for Pike Industry and has worked in the field for many, many years. Um, you know, we could put people in place, but uh I, I don't have the the energy, a- and I'm trying to be nice. As somebody departs, I'm trying to be nice, and I'm gonna do the best that I can.
Go for it.
Not to single people out, but um I, I.
Say, say what you gotta say.
I have no interest in being underneath the microscope um while I try to, you know, have a full-time job. And um I'm not doing the work myself on the roads. Um, physically, boots on ground, doing the reconstruction and the paving and the tree removal. Um, I would be doing the best I could overseeing it along with the rest of, you know, you gentlemen and the road agent, but um, any slightest little hiccup, boy, and it's, I just, I don't have the energy at the time. Well, I have the energy, I don't have the patience. So I'm exercising most patience that I possibly have over these last couple of meetings. So, because for every bit of math and paperwork that I sat and did and fact sheets or to the best of my ability that I put out there, somebody would quietly come along afterwards and drop little propaganda things on our desks and in the budget committee, and it was completely unacceptable. Um, in my opinion, and given the uh the things that have happened in this town since I've been elected. Um, so more for me to be, in order for me to be respectful and, and rise above, I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Sounds good. I told you two and a half months ago, you needed to sell it. You didn't sell it. You didn't have any public meetings. You didn't have any presentations ready to go. You didn't post anything. You didn't put anything out there. All the complaints I've had from everybody that basically said why is because of no information. The sheet you provided that you showed last week that you had was wrong. I've never seen those sheets from a cost standpoint.
I just got them that day.
That's okay.
And Chuck, before.
Chris, Chris.
No, 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 stop right now because what you're doing right now is doing a big I told you so. March town meeting is a long ways away. If you think for a second that I wasn't gonna continue, I have a PowerPoint presentation. I have a PowerPoint presentation.
I want you to take it to the meeting.
You take it to the meeting. I'll gather the information if you want. You guys can take it to the meeting. If you want to leave it to the voters, I'll continue to gather the information.
If you're not gonna have a presentation ready to go and have.
I have a presentation. I have a PowerPoint presentation. Ninety percent done.
Then why don't you put it out there?
I just told you why. Zero, except for Leo, who is a representative to the select, board of selectmen, zero.
I told you two months, I told you two months ago what my vote was gonna be, and I told you why.
You, you didn't, by the way.
You didn't, Peter.
You didn't. We look back at every single one of the videos.
Right, right.
Let me finish, let me finish.
Okay.
We look back at every single one of the videos and the minutes, and what you said is you would support a smaller project. I went on to give you more information, and you said, I get it. I'm on board now, something to that effect. I'm paraphrasing. But you never flat out and said that you would not vote for it, never, not once. It's videotaped. We have minutes. We have other people that are here that'll attest to that. You never said that. You never flat rid out and said that you would not vote for this and support it, but you wanted to put it to the voters. You never did that. Am I wrong?
You're right.
Nothing on tape.
You never did.
But that evening, you were sitting right there, and I was standing right here. And I told you right then and there that I was gonna, I was not gonna vote for it, but I wanted it to go to the town meeting.
Never happened.
Not on tape, I didn't, but that's okay.
We'll move forward.
We can move forward. And I'll stick by the decision, and I'll stick by the statements I have made on tape. From a strategic view for this town, it's the wrong thing to do from a money standpoint.
All the more reason not to do it then.
But I'm willing to let the people override me. I am willing to let them override me if that's what they want. Because it's the majority that rules, not the three people sitting here.
Correct.
Put it out there.
It's our, it's our job to, uh, you just said it. I didn't sell it to them, so.
All right.
For me, it started with the budget committee. And didn't even, didn't even make a difference. Didn't even make a difference, so.
Okay, so we'll table this till selectmen's meeting at four thirty, and we'll bring it up for a vote.
Okay.
I think we all have our feelings out there. We know what's going on, so. No sense hashing it all out. Can you uh?
Rebecca in here?
Any other questions to us?
I don't. I don't know if you guys do.
Yeah, bring her in, Rebecca. She wants to talk about, about classics roads.
Okay.
Do you want me to bring any more information? Do you want to move forward with it?
I see where you're coming from, and I see that your time's limited, and you have a lot on your plate. And one hip cup. You know, it's ninety-nine percent of things you're doing good, and one percent, it's brought up. That's what happens. And based on what I'm seeing with the taxpayers around here, talking to them, this are like, you know, with the three dollar increase this year, that's just a killer. I think if it wasn't for that, I think the bond would have went through.
Yeah, I, and, and I, I, I don't know how, I don't know how many times, the whole thing was three and a half million dollars. We paid two hundred fifty dollars. It's already figured into our tax rate. We know what the bond payment would be. I did it right on the slideboard. And, you know, the math is wrong. My math is wrong. My math is wrong.
It's two seventy-six.
So everything, do the math, and it's like, I, I even said to a budget committee member, I said, two plus two, I don't care how you s- spell your name, and two plus two is, what, no matter how.
I did the analysis. I mean, this is what it comes down to, two, two thousand seventy-six cents increase between the fire bond, the road bond plus what the town taxes it.
We're, we're taking two hundred and seventy, proposing taking two hundred and seventy thousand dollars from the reserve fund balance to do the time of the road project to the tune of five hundred and twenty. That's a hundred thousand dollars more than our first bond payment, which isn't until twenty twenty-six. And it's the unknown about the future. Well.
Yes.
We could have an airplane plummet from the sky and nosedive right in the middle of Townhouse Road right now. Right in the middle of this bond project and put a crater in it. And all of those other roads get put on the side while we fix that. So the unknowns, the unknowns, you, can you live by the unknowns? If you did, you would never leave the house. You wouldn't shave for fear that you cut your carotid artery.
Yeah, get, never get nothing done.
Alls you can do is take the best information, and that is what we're currently doing, the money we're currently spending, the money that averages every year. And we've been doing it for ten to fifteen years. So ten to fifteen years ago, they say, oh, geez, we better not do that, 'cause we never know. Although I think the school goes up every single year by a significant amount and the education funding and and I mean, that's part of it too, right? That's not getting any better. We got another private school that's sending out information and flyers and stuff, come here to the old courthouse and um, you know, that would uh qualify for the voucher proj- um, for vouchers, state-funded vouchers, so. Lot of, a lot of variables, but it, I just, yeah, the whole living in fear and the unknowns and using that as a tool because you disagree with somebody is completely different.
I think my opinion kind of has to be limited because I'm not a taxpayer here, so obviously I'm not paying for the bond at the end of the day, but uh just from where I sit, you know, being as close with Chris as I have over the last couple of months, I kind of watched this all unfold and sitting in all the meetings. I think too much work has been done to let it drop. But I do respect the time factor, 'cause, you know, I got some of that too in my own life, but um, I, I personally think it would be worth reaching out to some of those subject matter experts or whatever you want to call them that, you know, Juan was in the meeting the other night and whoever else, and see if maybe a small committee could get formed, kind of like what we've done with the fire station and I don't want to say push the work off on them, but, you know, they were vocal in the meeting about their opinions on it as well, and, and let them help drive the project so that it can come to a presentation.
I did ask him, and he basically said, I'm not interested.
He doesn't want to do it full-time. He did say, I mean, Chuck heard him. He was, he came right over to us and said he'd be willing to, you know, help out, absolutely, which we appreciate that very much.
Okay.
He just didn't want to be committed.
He didn't want to become immersed in it.
Right, right. But I mean, I think if there's a, a person or two that we could get to kind of drive the project, I mean, Chris, it's still your baby at the end of the day, but someone to kind of drive it forward and, and put the presentation together, whatever the case, I think that's the best scenario for everybody. I mean, again, I'm not paying for it, so my opinion here is very limited, but it's too important of a project to just let it all die. I, I think the conversation needs to continue. If I can help with PowerPoint or something like that, I'm happy to help with that, but outside of that, I don't know roads, so. Uh, you know, I can't really help piece it all together, but if I can help with a presentation, I'd be happy to do that.
I'll just consider it later. Good.
We're past the floor. We jumped in Rebecca. Would you, would you like me to get the warrant prepped up in case you want to vote on it during the regular meeting, or you want me to hold off right now?
Oh, for the ten percent.
For, yeah, for, it just has a sentence at the beginning, if for.
That's not due until the twenty-seventh, right?
So, yeah, we can wait until the eighteenth meeting if you want to think. I just wanted to be prepared, that's all. Do you want me to hold off until the eighteenth?
I, that's what I would do, but.
Yeah, just call.
It's not my call, it's our call.
I, you have a year to, to see.
I'll hold off till the eighteenth. I'll have some, I'll have it prepared in the event.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to ask, be prepared for the next meeting if you choose to.
You have the email from that line, that, that email that I gave you, wouldn't like to get it, right?
For which one? I'm sorry.
The ten percent.
The ten percent.
Uh, yeah, I have the one from actual council. The bond council.
All right.
So that's the one I would.
I didn't know you had a lawyer's degree.
I did, but you asked me to ask NHMA, which I did. So NHMA gave us the line report, so, and I gave you that email. Hi Rebecca.
Hi.
You ready?
I'm ready. I didn't like the copy that they have, 'cause I don't have the big copy around me.
Eleven by seventeens.
Yeah. So, we're just talking about the Moody Road, Romney Hill Road situation, and yet here's the um.
You stole my highlight.
Here's the original class six, there's, you want another one, Grant?
No, I got it.
Here's the original class six road information, and the class six road information has, has rewritten and was updated. Um, and I just got a very simple question, if it's gonna get my map open, though. Maybe I'll do it from one key and let it straight out.
Oh, you can, yeah, oh, you can bring the chair over here, but if you can talk loud, go ahead.
I, I can talk loud. I can talk pretty loud. Um, so what we've got, what you've got in front of you is a map that shows blowed up where Romney Hill Road and Moody Road bump into each other. Um, and it's been our practice um for quite a few years to have a dotted line down the middle of the class six roads. So it's easy to see whether a lot has frontage on a classified road or not. The confusion here is um, is of the definition of where on Romney Hill Road um, the class six road starts. Because uh, and this is just a blow up of what's on those maps.
Okay.
Um, because the dotted line that I put in years ago that was based on the old definition, um, or was based on what the maps were showing is in the middle of lot seventy-three, which is eighty-six Romney Hill Road. And the um, the class six road list says from eighty-six to Moody Road. So the quite, my question would be, um, there's a stretch of Romney Hill Road uh that is um is um class six, does it start at um, in the middle of number eighty-six somewhere, or does it start at the far end of it? Um, and another consideration actually is um is the class six road that's beyond there, which I didn't even take into consideration. So um, Leo's map.
Yeah.
That you just handily.
I read that, I was, was the number on that map? I was looking at something else, I can't, I guess. How was this?
Yeah, no, that's okay. Um, let me. That's all right. Um.
Should be headed to.
Four eleven.
Four eleven.
How many colors?
Four eleven. Um. So the other, the other part of it is that it's Romney Hill Road, not to Moody Road, it's Romney Hill Road all the way.
To Cliff Road.
To Cliff Road.
Correct.
So, so that's an issue that I'm not even bringing up today, that you would need to revisit. The paperwork, which is part of an improved public hearing paperwork, if you know what I mean. Do you understand what I'm saying? I didn't even copy that part of it, 'cause I just as minute caught that problem. That in fact, what I was looking at was, the question was what's going on here? It, you know, where, where does this line start? Does it?
So it, it does start exactly with it. I know that these are two different maps.
Yeah.
But as it turns out, that works out appropriately. Because as you turn in this driveway right here for lot sixty-five.
Yeah.
There's a garage right there, and that's where the class six road begins.
Okay, so the map is accurate.
The map is accurate.
The problem is that the wording on the list, the old wording said um uh, from diversion ditch to Moody Road, whatever that means. Now, the new list says from number eighty-six to Moody Road. And by saying number eighty-six, it's, it doesn't tell you where in lot eighty-six it's supposed to start. So, I'm doing maps at the moment, so I'm not worried about that. If you're saying that accurately reflects.
That accurately reflects what the class six road is.
Okay, so we won't worry about that, and we went through this one several years ago. So we don't need to revisit that, the issue of the turnaround and.
Well, no, that's.
Unless you want to revisit it.
So where, this, this is an unnamed road.
This is a non-existent road. Let, let's.
Well, it, it exists, and that was the original road. And that's where the telephone poles, that's where the utilities ran, so the house at number eighty-eight.
According to our maps, that road wasn't even there in nineteen seventy-three.
Oh, it was.
Well, it wasn't on our tax maps. And then in slightly later maps, there's the zigzag. Now, granted, these are tax maps, they're, tax maps are tax maps. There was a zigzag as if the two lots on either side of that were the same lot. Um, what I think you know, what I'm, what I was after today was trying to figure out that spot in the middle of lot seventy-three. And I'm content that the map is correct for that, and since as zoning officer, I'm not helping if you're figuring out roads, just maps or helping out with maps, then I don't need further decision from you on that, but I would suggest. decision from you on that, but I would suggest that that there's perhaps more to be looked at in all of the Moody Road, Romney Hill Road and anonymous unnamed road there in order to figure out whether the um the May third class six, the twenty twenty two class six road document accurately reflects what the original document intended for that. And I apologize for not doing a bigger map, I was trying to get the detail of this specifically in there until they missed the fact that that there is the rest of Romney Hill Road, which given on here, it said from both of them just say to do to Moody Road. So that would seem to indicate that there's an intersection between Romney Hill Road and Moody Road where it goes back to class five and you're saying it goes all the way to.
Is historically, if you look at all the old map, Romney Hill Road comes out on Clough Road. So like this narrative where it says the town of Effingham class six roads, where it says Romney Hill Road from eighty six to Moody Road, four eleven dash seventy three. Um that should actually stay Clough Road and even on this map, it's it shows that it's Moody Road all the way, but it's actually known. So.
This road, this shows Moody Road.
Going all the way to Clough Road.
In that direction.
Am I going the wrong way?
You're in the wrong way. This is Romney Hill going this way.
Correct.
What's go what's down here?
It goes back to uh promise like Romney.
Let's see here.
It goes to Clough Road.
Four sixteen.
Clough Road. Oakston Swamp Road, Romney Hill right there. So it does reflect that it's Romney Hill Road all the way to Clough Road.
Oh, so that needs to be changed.
Right, so the narrative needs to be changed for Romney Hill all the way to Clough.
Right.
Not to Moody.
Right, and I think that's you know, probably in terms of of how the this is just the last page of the document of how you update the class six road document. I'm not sure what your process is with you whether you can just have an administrative correction of that document. Because the old one, that it was based on said Moody Road.
To Clough.
To Clough City. So that was obviously treating this part of Romney Hill as Moody.
Yeah.
So when did, since it's all class six, when did that depart from whatever we're gonna call this point here? The let's call this the triangle. What when did it happen that that where Moody and Romney hit at this end of the triangle? It changed from Moody Road to Romney Hill Road.
Sometime in the early two thousands. Because when I was previously on the board in the nineties, that was that had been unchanged.
Well, I've got maps that go back pretty far, if anyone wants to look at them. You can decide how you wanna proceed to get these corrections.
And I so one of the things that happened and you know, without getting into too much, going down too far of a rabbit hole. So from Romney Hill Road, the utilities for the last house on the end, which is currently eighty eight Moody Road.
On Tucker Hill.
That's where Tucker Wentworth lives, our ACO.
Yeah.
Animal control officer. Um the electricity came up Romney Hill Road and went on that, we'll call it a spur road for this conversation purpose.
Oh, right away.
This spur road and went to that house. The electricity on Moody Road stopped at the corner, which you can't see on this map, you have to go to the previous map where the hairpin turn is.
Yeah.
That's where the electricity stopped.
Oh, so it came all the way around to here. The electricity from that direction.
It went all the way to eighty eight. And then when we had the ice storm in ninety seven, ninety eight.
Yeah.
There was so much damage to the line, the entire line was destroyed on this spur road.
Yeah.
Going to this house, that ever saw us felt to be more cost effective and cheaper because the road was opened up, wasn't so grown in.
Yeah.
To continue the line up Moody Road. When they did that, that afforded my father the ability to move from where he was because he had to pay to have two poles put in from the corner.
Yeah.
To his lot, which is going to be, what did we say that was ninety five? Chief, when my brother's gonna build this house.
I believe ninety five would be accurate.
So that my father was there previously and he moved to the original homestead. And when that happened because they moved the power lines.
Right.
Um but that spur road has been there since Chrysler the cowboy essentially.
Yeah, it wasn't on the tax maps in eighty one, that's the only thing I can say. You know, they though before they were converted over, before they were digitized by CAI back when they were drawn by Mr. What's his name up in Maine.
Yeah.
Um.
But this is always been, as you can see on these maps, that is indeed Romney Hill Road. And all the evidence shows that Moody Road although one would argue, if you take out the spur road and Romney Hill Road comes from one fifty three, goes to Clough, that Moody Road would end at this second intersection, the left side of this triangle.
Yeah.
Um or the right as we're looking at a copy of the map. So this is where the big farm, this is where the um farm used to be. The poor farm.
Yeah.
It was situated here, that moved that building was moved in nineteen twenty nine, the winter of nineteen twenty nine.
Is that where the old foundation is?
Yeah, that's where the old foundation is. And that was the the poor farm. That was where, because back in the eighteen hundreds, we're Stratford County, it's a big old history lesson.
Yeah, I know, I do genealogy. The fact that we're not Carroll County back that part is a little confusing.
Yeah, we were part of Stratford County and when we became Carroll County and they built the new um county home uh in Ospe Corner.
Yeah.
They no longer use that poor farm um.
Boy, that's out of nowhere.
Uh Parker Merrill bought the um building that became the Carroll County Pioneer, which is what we know today as Carroll County Independent. And a team of fifteen oxen, so that's thirty oxen dragged that in the winter of nineteen twenty nine to Center Ospe and the building still stands today in Center Ospe next to PB and J's.
So you mean the the Cal County Independent Building was?
Correct, the big green building, that was the poor farm.
Really? I thought I did all my program printing for the theater there when I first moved back up here and nice guy that ran that.
So that intersection right there is realistically where Moody Road ends and historically has ended. But because the driveway was put in and there was a big turnaround put in some years ago.
Yeah.
We didn't exactly follow the rules about maintenance, we just kinda, because nobody was this, we kinda stopped out of convenience, so it was a big open area, so that became the turnaround. Consequently, that's where the sign got put that says class six road starts here. But if you research back, the class six portion actually ends right here.
Well, what was important in 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 when that.
Or begins right there, sorry.
That came up as an issue since I've been here because it was a question of this lot having having class five road frontage. And the and.
This lot, this corner lot, triangle.
Yeah, and so there was wherever the turnaround is, it it enabled this lot to have um a whisker of class five road, which they needed, which was perfectly acceptable. I mean, in you know, it came from the segment and we talked about it, you know, fi- fine tuning where that is.
And and the turnaround is situated right here.
Yeah.
And this is so prior to Tucker owning it, Scott, uh gentleman Scott can't remember his last name, but he was the first to turn that into a year round residence and they put in the new driveway and.
That's to the left of it, right? When you're going up the road, turn the left.
Yeah.
That's.
And they opened up the turnaround.
That's this lap, this lot.
This lot.
Yeah.
Right here.
This lot here, this little point six six acres is not a buildable lot.
No, but what sits right there is the cemetery where the founder of Effingham is interred.
It was making sure that lot seventy two had frontage because they didn't frontage over on this end.
Yeah.
Even though I think they're, yeah, so that was it. Okay. So what would you gentlemen like me to provide for you if you're gonna try and take something, clean it up and then um?
Well, I'm just asking, I have another question, I have another question, okay. Ah Libby wrote from uh four oh nine. Matt from lot twenty six, where's twenty six?
Twenty five.
Twenty four.
That's Linda Fairchild's.
Yeah.
So where's twenty six?
From where?
It should have been twenty four, the old one said from Linda Fairchild's.
Okay, so that's a scrivener's error.
Linda from Linda Fairchild's to Old Town Road.
Yeah. Two 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 four.
So it should be right there.
It is, and it is right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it used to be drawn on the maps here and I got that corrected down to her property line.
Right.
Um because we didn't need this property owner thinking they had classified road.
So.
Um so that needs to be corrected.
So that should be twenty four.
Yeah, that should be twenty four. Um.
Mark your paper.
I've gotta mark my paper too, okay. Um yes, I do need to be up here.
I think we probably should review all this.
Yeah, don't try and talk all today.
Yeah, but I mean. This this one's not exactly.
So Romney Hill Road, you're saying.
Not sure neither would Knox.
From eighty six.
Because Knox is a lot of wood.
Two.
Is that the one that goes to the old home there to the main town?
Yeah, when when you start down through, it's the one like two hundred feet down, it goes to the right. But it comes off Wedgwood.
It comes off Wedgwood, Wedgwood, yeah, Wedgwood.
Six six should be twenty four.
Good, cocker, cocker and snow. Wedgwood goes down across the swamp.
Okay.
Knox, you'd be down Wedgwood and bang over toward east.
Yeah, so like where it says Knox, that should say.
Was from Wedgwood to main.
None of you were on the board in twenty two.
They they were the were the mud hole this.
Yeah.
That's Wedgwood.
Oh, Chuck.
Chuck, so do you remember, do you remember the redoing of this in twenty two?
No.
No, okay.
No.
Because you didn't have as much institutional memory, so um I would suggest that if you're gonna do anything that go through the whole thing, I mean, I've only given you a blow up of one map, one corner, but but um Leo found something else. If if once you figure out what the process needs to be.
Yeah, we gotta look at.
Perhaps it needs a hearing, but doesn't need to go to the
Get Kevin.
To the town, um the eliminating of roads and road name changes, I believe, has to go to the town meeting. But but errors like this, you may be able to just do in a public hearing, but you'd wanna do it all at once.
So who approved, I mean, do we have minutes on who approved this or how this was handled from the original one?
Well, it was done May third in twenty twenty two, so you can go back and find the the select board minutes from that meeting.
You were on the select board, right?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. I mean, the effort to update it was grand.
Yes, yeah.
Because all we had was that old, I mean, literally, all we had was sort of memory graph copies of it more.
It was it was approved by Lenny, Chuck and Vicky.
Okay.
I have it and I can forward it all to you guys.
Well, that's okay. I just wonder if we should put a, if we update this and approve it, we should probably put a slack things and all that stuff.
Right, this is this is a this is a last page to the class, to the four page class six.
That's why I'm saying I could send you guys the whole thing if you'd like to review and.
Please.
So you review the whole document and check the minutes of the meeting and then if it's I'm I'm you know, out on a limb here, but assuming that it's maybe just a public hearing that requires doing it, then you can update the public hearing and supersede the
That's what we do.
The twenty trade Hugh document with one. Um and your presentation, I mean, it's up to you, but your presentation can just be, you know, errors were found and we're fixing.
So we can now give us a month?
Yeah.
It would be wonderful if you could get it done by April first.
Yeah.
Because then any map changes that need to be done could go to CAI.
So.
So before you take off.
Okay.
We won't go too far. So gentlemen, back to the map that she laid two together. Going back to, I'm not saying we need to write a Rome, but for future endeavors of these landowners. Map eighty six Romney Hill Road. If I'm correct, that says there's three hundred and five point seven seven feet of frontage.
That's what I'm reading.
I'm not sure what the thirty one point seven.
There's a little, probably a little tiny jog down at the corner. That would be because there would be a tiny zag if you looked at an actual survey.
So two years after, well.
Then it's crooked.
It was like one of the first um projects, if you will, first buildings when um zoning was uh adopted in Effingham. A gentleman named Rand Scott purchased number eighty six and sixty eight. Is that right? No, I'm sorry, just eighty six, I'm sorry.
Uh huh.
Um and he was denied because he didn't have the proper frontage on a class five road. And he got an easement from map forty one. And that met this the uh that appeased the people that be. And he put his driveway at the corner of lot forty one and eighty six and crossed his property and put the driveway to the house, which you can see as the almost perfect square on lot eighty six.
So.
So for argument's sake, there could have been a driveway off in eighty six.
Yeah, so so those so that's a, you know, we have misreadings of maps or whatever. Somebody said, no, you don't have frontage. But in fact, according to all our maps, there is frontage there um.
And we know that these aren't, you know, always.
Well, and that's the thing, I mean, they are tax maps, it's just, it's fine, from my point of view, um dealing, using the tax map for reference for building permits and stuff, I'm fine if there's no information there. You know, I'll say, okay, we need surveys, this, the other. The problem is if there's information on the tax map that is misleading. I don't I don't think there's any reason to have information on tax maps that's misleading. We can either say that information isn't there, it's only a tax map, which is what we always tell people when they say, oh, but it's a hundred and whatever feet, we say, well, go find your survey because um you know, there's a triangular lot on on Green Mountain Road that we spent hours and months and whatever on and finally got them to a hundred, a hundred fifty feet of frontage. Um by going, looking at old maps and actually throwing out up, finally throwing up that portion of Stillings Lane that had meant to be abandoned back when they when they moved the highway. And it was on the state maps to be abandoned and the town never abandoned it and I brought that forward last year, the year before, it got abandoned. And so the the footprint of the end of that road, all of a sudden, gave the guy in the triangle frontage. So those are the kinds of things that's great that we can do. So we've got just the basic information there, so when someone comes to me, I can see that they have frontage rather than doing too much digging.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll go with this.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, we'll get back to you soon as possible.
Yeah, and don't hesitate to ask if you if you want me to um.
So. This was the old one?
That's the old one.
And this was the readopted one, May of twenty twenty two.
And the original one was like in nineteen ninety six or something incredible, way back.
This one, yeah, right.
Yeah, and help yourself, the flat file out back in my office. Um not only are there car big maps out on the table, but the flat file has um maps going back to nineteen seventy something when I got old Mr. Potter's maps, Smuggler's House and copy. So we've got we've got maps from the seventies map, from the eighties map, from the nineties.
Not the eighteen hundreds, so.
No, but that's before CAI digitized them. So if anyone wants to look for reference or anything like that, they're there. They're there for the looking if you if you wanna do that.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you. Everybody enjoyed that? Was it a ball? Oh, yes.
So you can.
Already emailed.
Good. So we don't start to.
Till four thirty, so we adjourned, we adjourned the work session.
Make a motion to adjourn the work session.
Start it.
All in favor?
Fight.
And we'll start our next.